Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
City Council members Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
He's in the back, but he is here.
Hershey.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marley.
Here. Next up is public input. This is a meeting of the Urbana City Council, a special meeting, and it will be followed by the regularly scheduled committee of the whole. Before we get started, I wanted to welcome some special guests in the audience tonight. These are students in the Urbana Adult Education class, the English as a Second Language class. They are -- come to us -- well, they're in Urbana now. They come to us from Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, South Korea, so we welcome you. Would you like to stand up and introduce yourselves? You can just stand up in your back row there. English as a Second Language students, yes.
Yes.
Welcome. Great. Welcome. You're from Urbana now. Wonderful. Welcome. We're very glad that you came to see our meeting tonight. Public input, I have Robert Naeman, who wishes to address the members now.
Are these both live? You have my choice?
Yes, just speak into the microphone, please.
My name is Robert Naeman. Live at 802 East California in Urbana. I'm coming to address the council on a topic that I have addressed you before, although more of you are here now, which is wonderful, than the last time I came. I want to invite you to a movie. And those of you who were here the last time I addressed you know that I had a plan to invite you to a movie which failed. But now I have a different plan to invite you to a movie which I'm confident will succeed. That plan is to invite you to the Virginia Theater in downtown Champaign on May 8th at 7:00 PM to watch the movie Seder Masochism by Nina Paley. Those of you who have been around or who remember my last presentation know that Nina Paley is the daughter of Hiram Paley, who was the mayor of Urbana and a professor in the math department at UIUC where I was an undergrad and graduate student. So, May 8th, 7:00 PM, and it's free. We're not charging any admission, so you can just show up. So the first thing that I want you to do is show up and get other people to show up, because the Virginia is a big theater. I don't know if you've ever been there. It's huge. I don't know, it's like 1,400 capacity. Okay, so there's a top and a bottom. I think if we get 500 people, the bottom is 700. If we get like 500 people, it would feel like the theater was full. I wouldn't be, you know, humiliated. So that's my goal, 500 people. So that's the first thing. Show up, bring your friends, May 8th, 7:00 PM. The other thing is that -- I hate to bring this up, but renting the Virginia, it's not free, okay? Even though, you know, it's owned by the Champaign Park District, so it's owned by us, but it's not free, so we have to pay something. And so I'm hoping that some of you might feel moved to help defray the cost of renting the Virginia, which is not zero. And people you know are chipping in, like Dan Grayson, professor in the U of I math department, is chipping in. Esther Pat, I think some of you know Esther Pat, she's chipping in. So I figure that like if Dan Grayson can do it, and Esther Pat can do it, Ronzo, I mean, people you know are chipping in. So you could, you know, everybody does what they can. This is America, and everybody can't do the same thing, but everybody does what they can. In order to chip in, you have to go to the GoFundMe. Well, there's other ways to do it, but a simple way is go to the GoFundMe. You can find easily, you go on Facebook, search for Just Foreign Policy, that's my organization, and it's the top thing on the Facebook page. And do whatever you can do, and you can do it anonymously, that's okay too. Some people are doing, some of my best friends are donating anonymously. So everybody, do what you can. But please, help me do this for Nina, for Hiram, for the First Amendment, because, you know, the First Amendment is really important, right? We all agree on that? Like that's what made the US different from the Soviet Union, the First Amendment. Okay, so, so please help out, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Eric?
Just a comment to whet people's appetite. Hiram Paley is in the movie. When she was making, when Nina was making the movie, she came to Hiram, who was, you know, near the end of his life, and recorded him in one of the major roles in the movie. So this movie features Hiram Paley, so if you loved Hiram, this has got to do it.
That's, I couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you, Eric, excellent point.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
I have one other card from Bishop Kim James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood. They wish to continually express their concern about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. We have two items of unfinished business from last week. First, and they're both related to the development at 1007 to 1011 West University Avenue. First is ordinance 2019-04-024, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for a planned unit development. This was Plan Case 2373 PUD-19. Kevin Garcia, city planner, has an update in response to questions raised by council last week.
Yes. Good evening. I'll be a lot more brief than last week. Why is that? I cannot pull it up. Oh, okay. Oh, I close it? Sorry, man. There we go. Okay. Okay, so last week, the city council asked for more information on these cases pertaining to the IDOT plans for University Avenue. Also, there was a question about the setbacks for the building at 901 West University Avenue, which is the Einstein's Bagels Building. To that, to address that second question first, the Einstein's Bagels Building received a variance back in 2008 to reduce its setbacks from 15 feet to zero feet. Regarding the IDOT plans, those were in the supplementary information memo that I sent out, or that we sent out last Friday. And those plans, some marked up plans are in front of you that show the location that we're talking about. So just briefly, the main plans for the, for this IDOT, for this IDOT project is that pretty much along the whole of University Avenue, including in front of, in front of the two parcels here. The existing sidewalk is going to be removed, and then a new sidewalk that's eight feet wide will be installed. So the sidewalk, pretty much universally along University Avenue, is going to be widened to eight feet. So that is, you know, is the, one of the main thrusts of the IDOT plans. In this area, another, another thing that IDOT is going to be doing is installing a new crosswalk, which they'll be installing a lot of new crosswalks like these throughout the scope of the project. So there will be a new crosswalk there, and then a new stop bar here for, you know, for people driving cars, so they know to stop before the crosswalk. There really aren't many stop bars, if any, along University Avenue side streets. So that's the gist of the IDOT plans. One thing that's, that's interesting to note on these plans is they do show the location of the existing sort of sidewalk path that's around the existing, or sorry, the once-existing building that was on the, on the site at Harvey and University Avenue. It also shows the footprint of that building. And so that sidewalk was set back about two to three feet from the, from the existing right-of-way. And then that building was set back about six to seven feet from the, from the existing right-of-way. I did want to clarify, and thanks to Councilman Brown for bringing up a question regarding the plans. With respect to the PUD proposals, the plans in the exhibits actually reflect the existing property lines and not the, the new property lines after IDOT acquired right-of-way. So the new line will be two to three feet further south, so that means that the setbacks of the buildings, of the building, and let me go to the site plan real quick. So the setback would, okay, so here you see. So this property line is going to come down between two and three feet along the, along the whole of the area, and then that setback's going to be two to three feet for the building at its, at its narrowest. So I did want to, want to clarify that. That really concludes my, my report about the questions that council had last time. I can answer questions. I believe the applicant's here to answer questions as well.
Any questions for Kevin? Dennis?
So, thank you for pointing out to us that the diagram that we've been given doesn't have the correct setbacks or position in relation to the footprint of the building. So, so how does that then affect the space between the to-be-constructed sidewalk by IDOT and the footprint where we see it today?
Yeah, so if we go back to, since, since the IDOT plans actually show where, so this dotted line here is essentially where the, where the new building would be. It'd be where the, where that existing sidewalk is. So there would be, I don't know, a foot and a half or two feet or so between the building and the newly widened sidewalk, if.
If any.
Sure. I mean, there might be.
So we're going to have a building that's going to be abutting directly to the sidewalk?
Pretty close, yes.
Okay. All right, and so I'm going to comment about that during discussion.
Any other questions? Bill?
Yeah, I wasn't here last week. I watched the video, but I don't remember hearing the answer to this. When you, when we have a PUD, Planned Unit Development, is it noticed the same way as the zoning change would be as far as with signs to the neighbors and things like that?
It is.
Okay. And the people across the alley, I think it's a 14-foot alley there, the people across the alley didn't object to anything, because they, this would basically say, we probably wouldn't let you build up to the alley because we don't want to end up with a 14-foot wide alley.
No, the people across the alley didn't have any comment.
Okay. Was that Smith Apartments?
Clark Street.
Across the alley, be to the south.
I'm, I'm actually not, I'm not sure who owns that.
Yeah, my only other comment was just that there's not a lot of detail on that, what's part of the ordinance, I mean, yeah, the only thing that we're actually voting on is ordinance and the attachment, and there's not a lot of detail on the attachment as far as what's in the memo, the open space ratio and stuff like that. Is this, it seems like when we've approved planning developments before, we've had all that on there. This feels like a preliminary, but not really a final. I know there's kind of, it's a relatively small one, so, you know, there's not a lot of, I could see why you don't need a drainage plan, for example. I don't think there's any more impervious surface than there was. It was pretty much all impervious. But it just seems like as far as total square feet, that's not on there. Height of the building's not on there, things like that. Is this kind of a trend now? We're going to leave those off the planned unit development, the part we vote on?
No, so the, I think the plans cover all of the usual zoning or development regulations from the zoning ordinance that, that need to be covered in a planned unit development. But things like a drainage plan, or, or like a lighting plan, those, those types of plans would be submitted at the time that the building permits are applied for.
I guess what I'm making a distinction between is the exhibits that are part of the memo and the attachment that's part of the ordinance. The ordinance is written with just one attachment, and that's a two-page thing with a picture and a, and a plan layout. The rest of these plans are all exhibits to the memo and really don't have any legal, legal meaning at all, because we aren't passing anything. Nothing in the ordinance says you have to go by these exhibits that were submitted with the memo.
Okay. Well, I'm sure, I think you could certainly add some of those exhibits to the, to the ordinance, so for instance, the building height, if you wanted that one, because I know there, there is an elevation that shows it at 62 feet or 61.
Yeah, I agree. It all seems to be there in the, in the exhibits, it's just it didn't seem to be part of the ordinance itself, so that, that was a little concerning. Okay, thanks.
Mary Alice?
So if I'm reading this correctly, there's two basic items that are being changed based on our building code with B3. The first one is the reduction in parking, and the second one is the reduction in the required setbacks.
That's correct.
Okay, so as I read this final and preliminary, according to the memo, it states that you would change the minimum front yard is 15 feet, according to B3, and you would reduce both front yards from 15 to five feet, and you would reduce the side yard from 11.1 feet to six inches. My concern is, you know, Bill pointed out that not everything is perhaps explicitly laid out in the ordinance, but as written in this memo, it doesn't sound like it is complete, based on the information you provided today. Is that correct?
Yeah, I suppose we would want to amend the, the front yard along University to, instead of saying five feet, to saying two feet. And that should, that should take care of it.
So I think that, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to also work in, if we're going to have to amend this ordinance if it is moved forward, then I think that we should also move forward, something that would amend it to talk about exactly what Bill was addressing over there. I don't know what language that would be, Bill. I'm looking at you, Bill, and he's writing, so he's not looking at me. I just, there's a bit of inconsistency here that I think needs to be resolved as this moves, as this moves forward.
Any other questions or response? Yeah?
Just a question about, as far as the current, if we pass this ordinance today, for example, then it refers to a five-foot setback, has the current property line actually changed yet?
I don't believe so.
So we would probably be safe just, just accepting the, what was in the exhibits, because the current property line is still, I mean, IDOT may have paid money for it, but maybe it hasn't been replatted and recorded and everything, I don't know, there's a little bit of ambiguity, I guess.
I think we're waiting on the recording, but Chris could address that, if that's okay too.
This is Chris Saunders.
Chris Saunders, Green Street Realty. Yeah, this is, the reason that the, the IDOT easement is not in the original information is it hasn't been recorded yet. It's, it just happened. Like we've talked about, really nothing changes versus what we talked about before. I mean, now IDOT has the easement that we've talked about all along. Our building's lot doesn't change. The lot line doesn't change. Just I own part of it, IDOT owns part of it. They're not going to put a building in that area, they're going to put sidewalk there. So really, nothing changes, other than we now know, and in fact, I never even had an IDOT plan of what they were going to put in there until it was shared with me this afternoon in this memo here, showing that it's going to be sidewalks, so I didn't know if they were taking an easement for utilities or sidewalk or whatever it might be. I like the idea of the eight-foot sidewalk, I think that's great. I think we talked about the safety along this street, and I think it's going to make it a much more pedestrian-friendly lane. But again, my building doesn't change, there's not, we're not, whether we're five feet or three feet off, it's still in the same location. We're all the way back to the alley on that side, so we can't, without redesigning the building, really can't push the building any further back, or we would. But again, that, that lot line won't change. We just sold a piece of that strip to, to IDOT to do their improvements. So technically, I won't own the front three feet anymore, once recorded, but again, there also won't be another building coming up in that location or anything that would be any different than likely what we would have there. We have, remember, this is only the corners. The building comes in and has, has some space on the, you know, on the inset of it as well. We're just talking about the edges. The other thing that's important to remember too is, I believe a lot of that information was in that packet as far as zoning requirements and where we're at. I think the only thing that we are asking for, like Mary Alice said, was the setback and the parking. So there's not any other zoning requests that we need to build this. We can build it by right otherwise, with FAR and open space and all the things that are required.
Just to follow up on, I think IDOT was also requesting like a six-foot temporary easement. Will they be able to get in there and do what they need to do before you get started?
Yeah, we looked at that stuff today, actually, what I actually signed with IDOT. Yeah, there is a temporary easement in there, there's, there's room to do that and work around our, our schedule and our plans, it looks like. So we coordinate with them, of course, but don't expect any issues there.
If I could just follow up on the suggestion on putting more of the exhibits into the ordinance. One easy way we could do that, I think the minutes could reflect, and then we could do that for the final ordinance, is include the entirety of Exhibit B, which, I mean, it has an existing plan, which isn't all that important, but then I think it has the rest of the items that you're looking for in it. Let me just double check. So that would be inclusive of what's there now, but it would also have the site plan and the floor plan, as well as the building sections.
And that does show the five feet, because at the time, and even I believe now, it still is technically five feet, it hasn't been recorded. So, you know, we would have changed that had the IDOT and the survey had been done, and we would have shown, showed it that way. But we've all talked about it, I think, at all the meetings, the fact that IDOT was taking a strip of land in there, and I couldn't remember if it was a foot, two feet, three feet, but we made sure, like I said last week, that when we designed the building, that we made sure that I was building on my land, so I didn't have to come back later and say, oops, actually, I'm on IDOT's property now and I cannot build there, and I got to move the building around. So we are comfortable, there's no deed restrictions in our deed that says we have to be a certain amount of feet from IDOT's property line now. So this, again, I don't think really changes anything, other than there's now two owners of that parcel. Myself and IDOT.
So if that were to be included as an amendment, it would have to be attached to both the preliminary ordinance and the final?
Yes.
Okay. And Dennis, you had a question?
Yeah, maybe, and Lori, for you as well. So you're recommending that we add Exhibit B, which is the zoning map? Or is there more to it than you're talking about?
I think to get at Bill's concern, that if we were to add all of the pages that exist in Exhibit F.
F, oh.
That it would have everything that I think he normally would see.
So it's Exhibit?
Yeah, no, I agree with that, because I thought you said Exhibit B.
I'm sorry if I did. I'm still on jet lag.
Wow, okay. I hope you rest.
So I have one more question then. So in the elevation drawing, which, you know, the building is a pretty good-looking building, you know, it certainly is comparable to other things that we've seen being built recently. It shows that there are trees spaced along the sidewalk in the parkway. Who, who's going to be in charge of making sure that trees actually are planted there? And is it the intent, or is this merely just an architect, is this artistic demonstration, but there's no tree planned?
It's a pretty picture. I'm not sure what IDOT has planned, that'd be their sidewalk mostly, so I'm not sure if that shows in the, if IDOT's planning on putting tree grates in like they did in Champaign along that section or not.
So Kevin, can we, I mean, can we have some kind of conversation with IDOT to ask for a tree being planted, you know, along the parkway? What's our, what's our possibility here? We're seeing it as being representing, you know, what we're going to be voting on, more or less, and then we're going to be disappointed, perhaps, if we don't see this happening.
Well, I'm sure we could always ask IDOT if they would install trees there. And I didn't, I didn't see any tree planting plans in the greater 400-plus pages of IDOT plans that I went through.
So they're not showing any landscaping along the Urbana or University?
I don't think so, but I can, I can check into that. And I was trying to, since I promised council that I would share the IDOT plans, and here I've only shared a snippet, and I'm sure you all would like to see the plans for all of University Avenue, trying to figure out a way to make that 80 megabyte, 400-plus-page set of plans into something that is, you know, is better for you all. I know that's kind of tangential to what, to the tree planting, but.
Yeah, if there's a URL that we could go to on the city website to, to look at those, I guess that would solve it.
Remind you too, we've got, we've got room in the, other than those sections that are close to sidewalk, remember the building bumps back?
Yeah, it does.
So we do have room there for landscaping, trees, things like that, without, you know, deterring from the retail spaces as well. So we would do a typical landscape plan, like we would, you know, do with the set of buildings that'd be required. But yeah, I think we want it to look a certain way, but yeah, currently, it's, you know, we just put something together for, for visual purposes only. And I don't know if there's trees there now or not, to be honest with you.
Okay.
There might be a whole row of trees, actually.
All right, so I'm going to discuss, you know, how the, our view, our vision of what University Avenue could look like, as opposed to what it probably might end up looking like during discussion.
Are there any questions for Kevin or Chris?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to put this on the floor? Jared?
I'll go ahead and move ordinance number 2019-04-024, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for a planned unit development from 1007 to 1011 West University Avenue, Plan Case 2373 PUD-19 for approval.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. Discussion. Charlie?
Mayor, does that motion include Exhibit F or not?
Inclusion of Exhibit F in the motion.
Thank you.
Secondary approves?
Secondary approves.
Okay. Okay, discussion. Dennis?
Yeah, thanks. All right, so I think I've expressed here in the city council room before, I would like, I would like the city, and I would like the city staff to commit to the concept that we can evolve and have our, our version or our side of University Avenue, one that is an amenity to the community by being beautified by trees. And I think that having a tree-lined street adds quality and value to the urban landscape. This is a very busy street, and I know that common planning practice currently is to abut buildings close to the sidewalk. I'm not sure where this urban planning concept originated. It certainly wouldn't have been a likely concept, you know, maybe in some part, in some communities in the past that are as small as Urbana. Chicago, probably, but they also have trees planted along, you know, major, important thoroughfares in that community as well. And they have flower boxes, and they have lots of amenities to make the street look beautiful. So my concern is that our city should adopt a plan to honor the 15-foot setback along University Avenue, which is required in a B3 zoning district, to allow for sidewalk spacing to change, and IDOT improvements to change. And if it is true that IDOT is not planning to put trees in the parkway, which is still only two feet wide from what I can gather from the diagrams that I see, that, that the city should then have a commitment to enhance the community thoroughfare and make a real difference in the appearance of the street for years to come by allowing a place to put landscaping before the footprint of the building intrudes upon the street and the sidewalk. So in a PUD situation, we can waive that right, and we can have the, the buildings placed closer to the sidewalk. And yes, already, we've had some new developments in the community on, on University Avenue that we waive those rights, two buildings, you know, one on each end of this, this composed structure. But if you look at the buildings that are currently there from a previous era But if you look at the buildings that are currently there from a previous era of construction, we've got a Dairy Queen, we've got a Taco Bell, we've got the Nero's Juro's Building, all of them were at least 15-foot setbacks from the street. And now we're merely surrendering that 15 feet to development. And I would like to, I would, I would, I would ask the city council to, and I would ask staff to reconsider and make University Avenue look different than University Avenue as we see it on the west side of Wright Street, where you have a six or seven-story building abutting the sidewalk, no green space whatsoever, it's just, you know, cement planters or, and no greenway, no parkway. And I don't think that that's a look that enhances the cityscape. I think it doesn't. And I, this is a concern for me, and I would like staff, and we have, you know, what we call urban planners here in our departments, who I think could probably weigh in on whether landscaping along, like a busy street enhances the street or diminishes its value to the community, to really consider whether the setbacks should be allowed as freely as they have been so far. And I'm not going to stop to, you know, I mean, I'll probably support this, this particular project, but there's many, many future buildings that will be built along the street. And there's a lot of property along University Avenue on both sides that are destined probably to be replaced by new construction in the future as we grow, which is a great thing. But why don't we grow in a beautiful way, rather than in try to duplicate what we see in, on University Avenue, you know, and other parts of the community farther down the street to the west? I just don't think it's, it's an enhancement to the cityscape. And that's really, you know, what I'm asking. I'd like us to reconsider how much, how many times we allow our setback to disappear and to try to beautify the street rather than to diminish its beauty.
Need further discussion? Bill?
Yeah, I, I wish we could put more trees along the street, but I think part of the problem is just the parkway is so narrow. I mean, you could put a 10-foot setback there, but you wouldn't be able to do much between the sidewalk and the building. The parkway, I think, is four or five feet there, so it's up to IDOT whether they can put trees in there or not. And some of them that were there now have been getting hit by truck mirrors and things like that, so they may be a little reluctant to put, put them too close to the road. As far as the, the building layout, I know across the street, there's a bus stop, and there's currently a bus stop here on this side. If that continues with the awning and stuff on that building, you might be able to put some benches in there and, and provide, I think the bus stop across the street at Campus Circle is a private bus stop. It's on their property. I don't know if MTD owns it or not, but might consider some, something like that. Yeah, I don't know. I support trees, but I don't know how much, you know, an extra five feet would help here. It's just going to get paved anyway, if it's between probably the, you know, the sidewalk and the building. But 10 or 15 feet, maybe, I don't know. I think it's a little late on this project.
Yeah. If you're on Illinois Street, south of Lincoln Square Mall, you will see that in the, in the right of, in the median, which is about two feet and a half wide at most, there are a row of trees. And these are ginkgo trees that grow vertically and they don't spread, and they actually work real well and they're growing fine. So if you're saying that it's, you know, you need 17 feet for something for a tree to grow, I think you're wrong. There are trees that fit the urban environment in a wonderful way. And, you know, if we work with the PUD developer requester and say, well, we're going to, we're going to allow a certain kind of leeway and certain other aspects of the community's right-of-way or whatever, the parking allowance, we can also say that you have to allow two and a half feet for these very narrow trees to grow along the sidewalk, and it could be on the property side of the sidewalk, not the public. If IDOT's, if IDOT's not going to put them in there, which I think we should ask them to, you know, there are ways of solving the issue, and it can come out to benefit all.
Mary Alice, and then Sharice.
I guess I'm a little confused here. So Dennis, are you proposing that the 15-feet current B3 zoning from the sidewalk to the property, from the property line to the, to a building be reserved for, not reserved, encouraged to have tall vegetation such as trees? Or are you suggesting from the street to the sidewalk, which I believe is owned, for the most part, on University by IDOT? And I don't know if that means that IDOT would have to approve that plan. I guess that's my confusion.
Well, okay, yeah, I mean, we have to find this out. I mean, if IDOT's not going to do it, then how do we, how can we do it? And if we have a setback, if we maintain the setback, and it's from the property line, which I assume is typically from the sidewalk, setbacks are usually from the sidewalk. So, you know, the sidewalk's changing, but who owns the sidewalk? It's either IDOT or the city. You know, that's, usually the property line starts at the sidewalk and then goes into the property depth. So, yeah, 15 feet there that one could request future developers to use for landscaping, you know, and we could have like, we could have a plan, we could have a, we could have a, a model for our own version of what we're hoping to see evolve on University Avenue. It may, it might be independent of IDOT's plans, because if IDOT doesn't plan to put any vegetation or trees along the boulevard, they're just going to allow a two-foot piece of grass, because that's all they want to take care of. Well, let's ourselves enact something that allows us to beautify the boulevard in the space, which is actually a, is considered a setback area. Now, if they wanted to cement it up and make a plaza there, well, we could work with them, because there still could be trees in a plaza. Or if it's going to be parking, you can have trees in a parking lot. So there's a lot of ways to enhance the, the street. So I don't know if I made that clear, but I would, I would like to see staff be proactive and sort of advocate for this kind of a concept, because I think it's the better one. And I think it still is a very strong and good urban template.
Sharice?
I was just going to comment, and I agree with Dennis, there is a way that trees, I've, I've seen trees on what you would think would be a concrete jungle, basically. They just have, and they don't grow, they don't have to be mighty oaks. They're, you know, they're, in, in LA, there's a grating that they have when they're, the tree, there's soil underneath, and it's, it's a nice tree for shade, or if nothing else, noise control, too. They use, they use foliage, foliage to, to keep sound, as a sound barrier, as a pollution barrier. And University being the mighty boulevard that it seems to be going through Champaign and Urbana, could actually, I, I think, benefit from having also having more trees on the sidewalk and maybe implant it into the sidewalk somehow. And it doesn't have to be something that's going to grow hugely, it just, it, but, you know, maybe up to 10, 12 feet tall and, and produces pretty leaves, flowers in the summer and whatever. But I, I know that it can be done, it's just something that has to be planned.
Any further discussion? Bill?
Yeah, just one more. Observation, I guess, it's interesting that, I mean, this is our busiest street in town, 23,000 cars a day. And it's just kind of interesting that nothing in this project or some of the others that are being built along there really consider the traffic and amenity. And it seems like used to, traffic count was a big deal, but there's nothing about traffic that would really benefit this project, except maybe, you know, you'll, you'll see the storefronts when you go by, but if you're driving and there's no place to park, it's just, I suppose, you might turn around and, and drive around the block, try to find some place to park. I just thought that was kind of interesting. Maybe a business that doesn't have a lot of coming and going just needs to be highly visible, like a political office or something like that, somebody for president, I don't know. Just kind of interesting.
There's plenty of those. Did you have a question or a comment, Jared?
Bill, we, when we talked to Chris about it, we talked about him maybe running some of the, like Taco Bell parking lot, because they seem to have an excess of parking right there that would be advertised for those businesses for people to walk in, especially if Nero's Juro's ends up there, because most people use it as a drive-through now, so the only option would be to park and go in. So we talked about it with him last week. I don't know if you remember that. All right?
Eric?
So I'm just browsing through some images of trees in New York City, which is really a terrific inspiration, because you see these beautiful trees growing right out of the sidewalk, and, and they're next to pretty tall buildings, which cast a lot of shade. So, you know, they don't need, you know, that much sun, so I, yeah, we could do it. We could do it. And IDOT has a, IDOT has a mission for beautification. That's part, some part of them is supposed to do landscaping, not just build roads. So we ought to find out, staff ought to find out who, which part of IDOT concerns themselves with that and make sure that they're involved in this project.
We can find out what the options are for this project.
Yeah, see what the options might be for this project.
Any other comments on the building or the proposal before you? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? And this is the proposal with the Exhibit F in its entirety attached.
Oh, maybe I should make a motion that we ask staff to inquire about landscaping potentials along...
We have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor.
Well, can I amend it?
No, we'll do a separate motion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Council Members Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
That motion passes. Second ordinance is ordinance 2019-04-025. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll move ordinance number 2019-04-025, an ordinance approving a final development plan for planned unit development at 1001 to 1011 West University Avenue, Plan Case 2374 PUD-19 for approval.
I'll second that.
And that would be amended with the...
With Amendment F, or with Exhibit F.
And a correction, it's 10007, not 10001.
10007, excuse me.
Oh. 1007.
1007.
And then...
To 1011. Right. Okay, Jared, was there a second?
I've seconded.
Seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Dennis?
Would it be appropriate to add an amendment to this ordinance, requesting that staff advise us if IDOT, and I contact IDOT and talk about beautification, trees and landscaping along the parkway? Staff or staff motion?
Separate staff motion.
All right. Still interested in it, but we'll do it appropriately.
It's a motion directing staff, rather than a motion voting on this particular thing.
Okay, thank you then.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Council Members Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
That motion passes. Mr. Roberts?
Thanks. Okay, I'm finally getting it right. So I would like to, to make a motion that we ask staff to contact IDOT and express to them that the city council has an interest in the landscaping plans along this stretch of the avenue, actually, all the way to probably five points, if that's as far as the plan goes, that we're interested in landscaping, we're interested in urban-styled trees along the pathway, in the parkway, and is it possible to request IDOT participate in allowing us or to installing trees, because this is an interest and a wish of the city. Sure, I'll second that.
Motion by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Any discussion?
So...
Sharice?
So your motion, your, your motion is to direct staff to inquire and consult with IDOT regarding not just the trans, implantation of foliage, trees of some kind, or foliage along University? I just want to understand the motion, from where to where? You said down to five points. You mean from like, from Wright Street to five points?
Yeah, along University, that in the corridor, which is within the District of Urbana, and that would be from...
Well, the project goes from Wright Street to...
Where's it go to? Where's it end?
Cunningham.
Cunningham?
City engineer Craig Schoenwiler can answer that question.
Thank you.
It goes from Wright to Maple, so that one block east of Cunningham.
Okay.
If I can, I want to interject a few things. We need to keep in mind that the project is a safety improvement, first and foremost. As I'm understanding it, the, the plans are ready to go out to bid as soon as land acquisition is cleared. We can certainly ask IDOT for, to look into the addition of trees. We do run the risk that we would delay the project. It could set it back to where the project then would not likely start this year at all.
Okay, we're not demanding, but we're just inquiring.
Right, I understand. So we just have to be sensitive to that. IDOT, in my history, is going above and beyond what they typically do with a project like this. So we just have to be sensitive to how we, you know, add more to the project. Now, my one suggestion is we can ask them about the, you know, certainly, we can do that, but we also, we could look at asking if we could add beautification at a later date, meaning that we get the infrastructure in place, and there could be something worked out with the city. In the past, a lot of these things have been amenities that the city would have to pay for, not IDOT. IDOT is not in the business of beautification. They're in the business of moving vehicles and now addressing safety improvements. I'm just telling you from my background as an engineer dealing with these folks.
Okay, so my understanding is then that they might not be interested in placing the trees in, but maybe they would give permission to, for trees to be placed there?
It could possibly be. There could be an agreement, you know, if, as long as it's installed in a safe manner, meaning it doesn't impede anything within the right-of-way.
Okay, well, maybe then staff could at least say that if this, if this motion passes that, that the city has inquired about it, they would, they would prefer to have some landscaping along the street, and if, if it was not prohibited, you know, would they, I would be happy to try to come up with a beautification plan when, when the construction's finished, if that's most appropriate thing as far as their construction plans.
Right. We just, you know, I guess I've always been straight with you folks. We just have to be careful, because there, you know, we have issues with, we've had some people, you know, pedestrian, serious safety issues, and that's the primary focus here. I understand about the beautification, I certainly buy into that, but we have to be careful that, you know, they're right now in the ninth hour, they're, they're waiting to get this clearances, and then they'll pull the trigger and put it on the June letting. These things to go on the June letting, they have to be ready, you know, and I'm sure their timeline is pretty tight right now to get it in there. Then it delays it, and then it, you know, we run the risk that we don't even start construction this year at all.
Well, I hope this isn't, this request, this is just a request for information, and I don't think that would derail an entire project, but if it were, well, you know, we can then talk with the developers as they come to us.
Right. And then as far as the space, you're right. I mean, I think you can do some things. We would want to get our arborist involved, Mike Bronk. We do have to be aware of, you know, sometimes even you can plant something in a two-foot space, but later on, it just does become problematic. But certainly, we can look into those things.
I appreciate that, at least. At least we know, yes or no?
Carol, did you want to speak?
I did. I, I just want to say, I understand the spirit of what you're striving for, and we will explore the options. You don't have to, you don't have to have a motion, you can ask us.
Well, you know, I'd be interested to know if council can, you know, what they feel about it, then.
Is there a discussion?
I did want to ask.
Sharice?
Miss, what's her name again?
Craig.
Greg?
Schoenwiler.
So you said IDOT is not in the business of beautification, they are in the business of transportation?
That's right.
Which is right there in their title. My question to that would be, trees might, might actually be in the, in their benefit as far as how the traffic moves going from east to west on University Avenue, and having something to shade the sun right out of your eyes while you're driving down University might be a little bit helpful as well. So maybe we can just try to edge them into the business of beautification by way of safety and use that also as a, maybe, you know, a little leverage there, saying, well, it's, it's a safety thing as well. I don't know if they deal with pollution issues, but trees along a boulevard do suck up a lot of carbon. That might, that's why it's called a boulevard, because there are trees there. So I don't know if this is an avenue, but I'm just saying maybe that could, you can also give them a little nudge in that area as well.
I'll help our friends at IDOT as long as much as I can.
So it sounds like we have a direction to staff to inquire of IDOT about landscaping options for University Avenue, and then we'll look into beautification efforts as, after construction has been completed. Does that sound like what, you reflect what you'd like? Okay, Eric?
So maybe this is like the equivalent of greenwashing, but the IDOT website says that they do landscaping, and they've got lots of pretty pictures. They planted natural plants along roadways and, and such. So maybe, maybe these few pictures that I've seen are everything that they've ever done all over the state, but they say they do it.
Yeah, no, you know, and they do plant trees. It's usually though, a tree lost is a tree that's put back. It's not necessarily new trees. And then just from my experience, it does usually come to the local agency to pony up the funds, so.
This landscaping will cost the city of Urbana. There's no doubt about it, so be prepared.
Well worth it.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Are you all right with just withdrawing the motion and just doing a staff direction?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, as long as, you know, as long as it works.
All right.
Thanks, staff.
Thank you.
I read you.
Okay, so... No, we're not adjourned. I forgot to include one item of public input we all received in the email today. I don't know if it was shared with council, but I'll send it out tomorrow, and it will go into the record, an email of support from Jason Rock for this project on University Avenue. So that will go as part of the record.
Now you can save your adjourn. You're still in charge.
Oh, I'm still in charge. Got confused on my meetings. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.